That's recording.
Recording.
And we are recording.
We are recording, so therefore it's 5:30, we'll call meeting to order. The meeting comes to order by Ramiro Ross at 5:30 PM. And we'll have the road call. Ross, Chair, here. Michael Norman. Absent Frank Cabello.
Here.
Lawrence Stone.
Here.
Louis Pauling, excused. He's at conference with the city of, uh, cities and towns. Larry Phillips.
Brother.
Benjamin Lemply.
Here.
Sorry. Stephen Day.
Here.
And Liaison Director Harrow.
Here.
Yeah, thank you. Call to the public. Do we have anybody who called for the public? Nobody called to the public. Called to the public. Jesus, Dr. and Mr. Harrow. During our meetings, when there is nobody in, in, in presence out there in the, in the audience in the call to the public, can any one of us excuse themselves and act as a call to the public on something of their concern?
Uh, no, there's a, there's a section there for, uh, member comments. That's where that would be appropriate to do that.
Okay, okay. Very good. Then, nobody, no call to the public. And now we go into old business. By the way, I have, I have two requests to pull this meeting, uh, short tonight.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll move right along if we can. First item in the old business is discussion of the Tombstone Canyon project. Larry, you want to open that one?
Well, if we, as we decided at our meeting a couple of weeks ago, that we did have the money. When did we meet with the mayor?
Tuesday.
That we did have the money to do the project and therefore we should move forward. Uh, if we are to move forward, it's kind of like up to, uh, the Public Works Director to kind of get the ball rolling and, uh, get everybody headed up and moved out towards the right direction.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, the mayor said told you that we have the available funds for that?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, that, that's news to me, I'd have to take a look at that and see.
Get it squared away and get it nailed down, but that's what we were told. To the deal was, and, uh, we, uh, just have, uh, the Chairman, myself, and anybody else who wants to have any input on this. We've kind of got an idea how we want to approach it and get with it. Again, we're not trying to run your department for you, Mr. Director, but, uh, we recommend that we contact, uh,
Leo.
Tucson, uh, Pay Asphalt and Paul Leo and, uh, ask them if they're still on board and if they're still available. Uh, we, uh, another question for you is, is your videotaping survey system set up yet?
We do not have the video, video recording, uh, the, um, uh, video assessment. We don't have that available to us right now. However, we did get the, um, well, we can, that, that's a little bit different. If we can comment that, um, just a little bit later, but we, just for a little bit on the Tombstone Canyon.
Yeah, well, that's, it just has to do with that.
Okay.
Because the Director, the, uh, I'm sorry, the Chairman and I are recommending we do a survey, visual survey now.
Okay, so we can do that and?
And, uh, we can do, and that's why I asked about your system.
Okay.
And so if, uh, your system is up and running, if not, we can do it the good old fashioned way and get out there and look at it. Kind of like to, if that's what we're gonna do. And if we, depending, of course, everything, how much time we got, you know? Here, we're kind of late start, we're under the gun from time. Uh, so, if we do a visual, I'd like to do, uh, keep it as simple as possible. Just get out there with a hundred-foot tape and a can of spray paint and start it to Station Zero and progress up the canyon. And we see something, we mark it, give it an ID number on a, some sort of a spreadsheet and move on up the canyon. And then, when we get, uh, I don't know if Tucson Asphalt's even come down and looked at it. So before we, and Chairman expressed concerns that, one, is the slurry seal as proposed by Tucson Asphalt going to give us the results that we would like to have? If not, we shouldn't waste and squander money. And, uh, so, you know, in, uh, input to Tucson Asphalt, you know, give us, uh, the makeup of their, uh, of their materials. Is it green material? Is it, uh, old-fashioned, uh, MA sand with mixed with tack oil? What is it? And, uh, what kind of a warranty will it give us? Get this information in, comes in to you, and then we can move forward. But, uh, the committee right now can give you a visual survey.
Okay, so, um, Tucson Asphalt has come down. They came down originally and did an assessment on it. And when we first, they first gave me the proposal for the slurry seal. And slurry seal is a sand and tack mixture. Um, that's what that is. Um, I met with Tucson Asphalt again this week. And they, um, are, they want to give us a proposal for the green asphalt. The slurry, slurry seal is not green. It's, the green asphalt is something that's proprietary to Tucson Asphalt. Nobody else can get it. You, we can't get it and put it down. Um, so they're gonna give me a proposal for the green asphalt also. I said, sure, that's not a problem. It doesn't cost us anything to get it and see what that costs. So we'll have that proposal in addition, in addition to the first one they gave us for slurry seal.
So you're saying that it could possibly be instead of slurry seal, a mill?
Green asphalt is not a mill. They're not gonna mill, they'll just straight overlay. There'll, there, there's gonna be portions of it that they will have to mill because the asphalt is already pretty high up on the vertical curve. So they would have to, they, they do understand that, but for the most part, it's just an overlay of green asphalt.
They're gonna overlay and, uh, it's not gonna give us drain, uh, flood problems?
Well, they also, while, uh, Tucson Asphalt came down, they also brought down an engineer that they have, um, uh, they procured. They're gonna use him when they go do these, those, or his company, when they do overlays to make sure there aren't any drainage issues. So that will be included in the proposal, in either one of the proposals, that we don't, make sure that we're not changing any drainage. Um, in addition to Tucson Asphalt coming down this week, I also met with, um, I can't remember the name of, Sun, not Sun, Sungland, Sungland Asphalt.
Sungland Asphalt.
Yeah. They came down, I met them, um, two weeks ago when I was at the APWA conference. And they expressed, uh, an interest in coming down and, and taking a look at Tombstone Canyon. And so they're gonna also provide me with, with a proposal. So we'll have, we'll have a good idea of, of if we go straight asphalt overlay or if we want to go to a slurry seal. We'll have a really clear picture of what we want to do.
What kind of a timeframe are we looking at to where it's not feasible to do it this year? Are we, running out of time is the window of opportunity?
As far as weather is concerned?
Oh, yeah.
No, we, we, well, we have plenty of time to be, with weather. I would, although, I'm not, you know, I'm not from Bisbee and I don't know exactly when it starts to, whether it starts to get to the point where we can't put down asphalt. Slurry seal, you can't. You can put that down as long as it's not wet or it's not snow. So we should be okay with, we should be okay with slurry. For the most part, it's when we get to, when we get to putting down asphalt that that's where we have to start worrying about the temperature.
So is it, do you feel that the, uh?
I would say that it's, I, I would say for doing a, a road assessment on, a road assessment on Tombstone Canyon, I would say that's, it's not necessary. They're going to come down and do that assessment. They're gonna tell us whether, whether it's, uh, appropriate to do the slurry seal or it's not gonna work. Um, so I would say that it's, it's not necessary to do Tombstone Canyon. However, we'll, we'll talk about more road assessments when we talk about the, um, the software that we purchased in a little bit.
So, uh, questions there, just a quick question there. Quantity here, this is a Tucson Asphalt estimate. Just, I think it's square, square foot or something like that, I'm not sure what it is. Do you know how many miles or from what?
Yeah, it's approximately a mile and three quarters.
Okay, so it's from?
It's from the top to the bottom.
On, right?
Yes.
Uh, just to get a little bit of perspective on the distance. Yeah, the distance is just about the same distance as from, uh, the trip, traffic circle on Bisbee Road down to the ballpark.
So what we did before?
Yeah, about the same, in the same distance.
Yeah, if you were to see with green asphalt, it's like go to the movie.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I've seen it and so if it's.
I watched them do what they do, you know, like where the ADA stuff was. They can bring a grinder in, they grind down. They don't do in the middle, so it has a little bit higher crown, but that just allows for better drainage.
So we could probably expect a price similar to that if they're gonna, for a green asphalt. But well, they're gonna provide it. I also, during my meeting with them, and this is before I was made aware that, um, we may have the entire amount to do it. Um, I can, I asked them to go ahead and start looking at maybe phasing things. Um, and we talked about the, just as a possibility, doesn't mean that we're doing it one way or the other. But it gives us an option so that we can look at those numbers.
Good, yeah.
That sounds pretty good. Now, the, uh, the one thing that was, uh, discussed and I'll briefly go into it so that there won't be any, uh, misinterpretation about the, uh, go ahead and do it now, is that, uh, there is an opinion, there's a strong opinion by, uh, Mr. Phillips that we, we do it, uh, as quickly as possible so that we don't run into a, more of a deterioration, if there is a deterioration.
I would agree.
Yeah? The sooner, the sooner we get to it, the better. And that was one of the strong, uh, the strong interest that we wanted to express as to why we wanted to do it expeditiously. I like that word. To do it as, as quick and that's so we don't have further deterioration and further costs later on.
Absolutely.
Okay, any questions from, uh, from the rest of the committee? Oh, okay.
Oh, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Is it possible while we're doing that to, cause it's such a big, uh, length of road, um, to look into two things that would be very easy to change potentially? Is restriping, so, um, extra cramming and extra parking spots and maybe a bike lane or, or making it a little bit more friendly to bikes. Um, something that wouldn't add extra costs is just thinking about, you know, where to put, uh, paint.
We have thought about that. We've already got, we've already got a few ideas that we've. I've mentioned every time when we talk to a contractor, there's a few restriping that we want to do. And I've mentioned it to Police Chief Chavi. Um, the way our code reads is he's the one that controls, uh, the traffic. I, I give him a report and he, this is the way our code reads. It's, it's a little, there are a few cities that still have it that way. Um, but if you follow the MUT CD, most of that stuff has to have an engineering report anyway or study, engineering warrant study. So I perform that study and give it to them.
So, and, and, uh, the question asked by Ben Epley was to see if we could get it in so that would be less costly later on. And we are going to discuss the parking plan later on, right? Good, it's got a good report, I'm sure. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay, so we have, uh, we're waiting for proposals.
Yes, we're waiting on, on proposals from two different contractors.
Let's go on then to the discussion of HIRF dollars versus tax dollars. Who's got that subject? You have it? I have it? It's item number two.
Sure.
HIRF dollars versus tax dollars. It appears on the agenda and I don't recall that I called for that subject to be put on the agenda.
I, I didn't call for any of the, of the items. Anybody? I can answer questions if somebody's got a question about it.
Well, I think at the last meeting, we talked about perhaps having, um, there was a question about, um, the money that was in the budget or was removed from the streets budget. I think when we were looking at the Tombstone Canyon project, there was, I forget the exact amount, but it was four hundred some thousand that was taken out of the budget this year and said to reimburse the city for the costs of, um, Public Works staff and buying some equipment, which I think there was some debate whether that equipment was bought out of the, the, uh, sales tax money to begin with. So I think we had talked about maybe Kerry Bagley kind of giving us, coming in. Yeah, for, yeah.
How those dollars are. I think you mentioned that how the dollars are broke down.
Right.
If we could get.
Two sources of funding. I, I don't know if, if, if this is the, uh, the question that really says HIRF dollars versus tax dollars. But to answer the question, last Tuesday, we had a meeting with the City Manager and the Mayor. Present were Larry Stone, Larry Phillips, and myself. The idea was that they were going to explain how the money was distributed in as much as, the concept, the precept were that we did not understand.
How's with the City Mayor and who?
Uh, the City Manager.
City Manager and the, and the Finance Director.
But that was the, uh, the second time. And as a result, you will see under your, uh, under streets, there's a summary on the front side that I haven't read yet, but on the following pages, the, uh, shows you, and this is part of the, the result of, uh, part of the result of that meeting was that we are now going to be getting this kind of a report from accounting that shows the line items for the street revenue, line items for personnel expense, uh, line items for total street expense. Uh, then, uh, in the third page under, uh, page thirty-two as given by the Finance Office, is the balance sheet. And, uh, as of June thirtieth of twenty nineteen, they said that the streets has a total asset and, uh, a hundred eighty-eight thousand, the liability is a hundred eighty-eight thousand. Who would expect anything less? That the two numbers would, uh, fit? That, uh, we wouldn't expect anything else and less. That's the way it would be. Account, uh, total liability equals total, uh, assets. Then we also have on page thirty-three, if you notice in the bottom right corner, we have another sheet for streets that shows the taxes by HIRF gas money, as of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. And then we have miscellaneous, the one percent sales tax and one, two, three, four, five, uh, four other line items. And, uh, so basically what we have today to report is that that is the, uh, the end of the year, June thirtieth.
No, this is the first month of July. This report?
June thirtieth.
Is it?
Yep.
Hmm.
Page thirty-three.
Okay, you're right. I apologize.
Well, thank you. And then, uh, the fund expenditures is on page thirty-four. So, in reference to the HIRF dollars versus tax dollars, as you see on these pages, to make the long story short, that's the answer that we got. And further from here on, that's what we're gonna be, uh, living with. And, excuse me. And I think that if we have any druthers that we, that our druthers show or address any of those line items that we think is inappropriately charged to the tax dollars in the future.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Cause I can see of taking the total, I mean, the streets is a big department. It's got two major sources of funding. You combine everything, you see, but, I mean, the way we first started to do it, we understood that street personnel from, from the Public Works Department would work, but they didn't work five days a week, eight hours a day doing it. They worked about three days a week.
Correct.
So it's a complete yearly salary, should be charged to the one percent sales tax. Some of it should come from her funding.
No. No, so, so this is, so, so this is what happens. So this is what happens in our, when you, when you, if you look at page sixty-one. If you look at page sixty-one, the very top of it is our revenues, the first sec, the first section. That's what comes into that, into this fund. That fund pays for everything in here. Now, what you're talking about is if our streets department goes and does, um, work on a facility, building, that does, that can't come out of that, that comes out of somewhere else. Now, everything, everything else within this is, is applicable to any of these revenues.
This is the point. I do not believe if you look at the wording of the actual petition of the one percent sales tax, you're not gonna be able to, you shouldn't be using that money to clean out Tombstone Canyon's drain channel.
It's an infrastructure.
Yeah, you need to really look at how it's written. Cause when we were first coming to this meeting, uh, day one, it would be used to repay streets and maintain those new streets. Um, that we were legally bound by those restrictions. And now all of a sudden, they've gone away.
Yeah, well, uh, I'll take exception with that and I'll take up the argument with that.
We can, I mean, I'll go.
Well, I was there at the beginning, okay? The very beginning.
Streets and directly.
Keep, keep in mind that the, the subject right now is HIRF money versus tax money.
We'll just let it go.
I can't let it go, Steve, sorry.
Can't let it go now. Now, if you hear what was, infrastructure at the time in two thousand and nine when we started was defined. We defined to the public and to the council and the mayor what infrastructure consisted of. Street maintenance, uh, maintenance, as you say, taking a fire hose and washing down the ditch is maintenance. It's just as important as seal coats or anything else. Therefore, it's considered work on infrastructure. That's the way it was sold to the public. And that's what they expect. It doesn't have to do just with paving the street. And that's why we, uh, it, it has all the definition as we did, was defined back at that time was that it consisted not of streets but of transportation. Yeah, uh, let's say, uh, we, uh, you got a bus stop that got hit by a car and you fix that bus stops and weld it over there, that's work on infrastructure.
Mr. Captain, we did disagree, I don't remember the same way, I'm just sorry. I don't remember the same way, that's fine.
That's it, but it goes in sidewalks, repair of sidewalks. It's work on infrastructure. It's a public convenience. Stairway, the same thing. It's a public convenience. So, and, you know, parking, everything. And, uh, there are different funds, but that's the original intent. And that's the way the public got the information. So we, we got to, I don't know where there's some written document that says this is this and this is this cause I never wrote one and I don't know anybody who did. So, that's.
Yeah, as time goes on, and there's, uh, Steve, Larry, Mike, and Mike, then the public. We have to continue to work with what we have now. But that should not defer us or keep us from looking at the line items as they are. And if we wish to, we would look at each, uh, and discuss each one, not at this moment, but a future meeting so that we can refine the issue. I'll go back and in my meeting, in our meeting, Larry, Larry and myself on Tuesday, to the, uh, Mayor and the City Manager. I personally made a plea to them. And the plea was that to look at the way in which they are operating, the budgeting, the, uh, accounting and everything of that nature so that if we find the opportunity with their help and I quote, with our challenge, that we take the opportunity so that we can release as much money as possible to the Public Works Department for the purpose of doing the, uh, streets and infrastructure, release as much money for his operation and keep the will of people in a state, a good state of, here's what we worked for in order to give the Public Works the opportunity to maximize the dollars that he could use in his daily work in the streets and in, in the infrastructure. Does that make sense to everybody? Makes sense to me.
Makes sense to me. What, what we're doing is we're getting a, uh, a source of information that we don't have veto power over, but at least we can call attention to something that we feel we shouldn't have paid for. And we can, we can bring it up and say, hey, you guys, you know, it's, you know, you're trying to steal a couple extra cookies out of the jar here, you know, on this one. And like I say, we can't veto anything, but we can call their attention to it. We think this is an unjust expenditure. For our fund, we could better use the money.
Question. Did we go, did we go too far in explaining the HIRF, uh, the subject, HIRF dollars versus tax dollars, or did we not go far enough?
I, I just have one question.
Go ahead.
You know, when you mentioned that you asked the mayor to release as much money to Public Works as possible, is that general fund money or?
No, no, no. You know, we, we, we know what, we know and we understand better what general fund money is. It is not necessarily the one cent sales tax money.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
And if they have general fund money to release out of the expenditures to put into the streets, uh, budget, great. That's what we're looking for. To, to relieve and, 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 uh, make available as much of that money that was budgeted. I think the budget shows up on, uh, on the last page? Am I wrong? Someplace on here. No, on, 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 on the second, page sixty-one, there's the revenue for both for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. The streets, HIRF and tax money. Uh, and you see other line items on there. But the total streets revenue is supposed to be one million, two hundred ten thousand, nine hundred dollars. And, uh, there's, uh, I didn't bother to cover the number of line items, but other than the first two line items, which he also, uh, includes streets revenue, that as much money of that goes into the streets paving program, the streets repair program.
So I guess the question that came up last time was, and I don't know if you got any answer when you met with them, but there was an amount that was taken out of the streets budget, four hundred some thousand, and that was said to, you know, reimburse past expenses for, from streets. Now, was that reimbursing?
Hmm.
Cause I, I guess my question was, well, those.
Because I, I guess my question was, well, those, if those expenses were paid out of turf and, uh, the one percent sales tax, what, what were they reimbursing? You know, if they're saying, well, it was paid out of turf and the one percent, but we're pulling four hundred some thousand and saying we're reimbursing the general fund. I guess that was something that, to me, was kind of unclear.
Yeah, and, uh.
And I don't know if you got any clarity on that.
Well, maybe I can give you a little something that I learned, Mike. Was that when we had our last meeting with the mayor and the city manager and the, and, uh, I, my ask, the question was because we had thought that during, when we were doing the Bisbee Road project, we were dealing only with the one budget, you know, that Verena was giving us. And so we had, that's a fund, that's what we were working out of. And so my thought was, and I talked this over with the chairman, was that did the city of Bisbee write a hot check to Tucson Asphalt? And to my surprise, last week, the mayor said yes, not only once, but twice. And so that is, I learned at that time, that is where that four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars went. They had to put that money back in to, to cover those checks. And they, they took the money from a different fund at the time to cover the checks. And so it's kind of like the old kite and check story, you know, that people go to jail, used to go to jail for it. That's kind of what they did to my, you know, as I have received it.
Larry Stone, do you have anything to add to Mike's question?
You, well, if you look at page sixty-one and you look at the top paragraph, that those are the revenues, and those are the real actual revenue numbers. It's the turf gas tax plus the one percent sales tax. So in twenty sixteen, seventeen, the revenues were one million, one hundred and fourteen thousand. And in twenty seventeen, eighteen, it was one million, two hundred thousand, two hundred twenty-three thousand, and on through the end. And that the bottom paragraph on page sixty-one are expenses. And if you take those expenses on the bottom of page sixty-one and you add them onto the expenses, all of page sixty-two are expenses. And you take the expenses from page sixty-two and you add them onto that other number on the bottom paragraph of page sixty-one. You take the one million on page sixty-two, three hundred and eleven thousand, and you add up for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and you add on the two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars from, uh, streets personnel expense, it gives you the total expenses of one million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And so those were the total, in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, those were the total expenses versus total revenues of one million, one hundred and fourteen thousand.
Right.
And the difference there is, uh, four hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars to the negative.
Yeah, okay.
And so that's how, you can calculate that in that same way for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. The, um, the, the deficit was two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. And in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, that, it was two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars negative. So actually, we were like nine hundred thousand dollars in the negative and they only were asking us to reimburse them five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So these are the numbers that we were gonna use going forward. Teresa, the new city manager, provided us with these numbers and they're enough to calculate what we're gonna have going forward in the expense and the revenue columns. And so that was very helpful. I still have a question about what the baseline was going back to twenty fourteen. And so there's some numbers that we might be able to adjust of the, of the public works department before the one percent sales tax kicked in with the mandate of repairing and maintaining the streets and infrastructure.
But that's, that's a little bit, that's a little bit of history there that, uh, has not been explained. We, uh, we took it, we took it from what we have discussed so far, that, uh, we were operating with turf money. And whatever else money came along. So there was a big struggle, there was no paving pro, program. That's sort of the summary of that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, it used to mean team, or streets, we.
Right, right. There's still some, there's a lot of numbers that are being discussed still on both sides of the expense and, um, revenue.
Yes.
There's more so on the expense side than the revenue side.
And that's where we're gonna take the opportunity, that's where we're gonna take the opportunity, as I said earlier, to try to refine the information that comes along as we get, get a little bit further, so.
Yeah, well, at least we've got revenue and expense numbers.
Yeah, which we didn't have before.
Right.
So thank you, Larry, that was very helpful, see that, where the negative numbers are at.
And so really, they're taking it kind of easy on us. My concern is that because it hasn't been nailed down precisely, that there's still room for some disagreement come next year. There could be more, um, uh, numbers, different numbers going forward that, um, we still haven't really standardized all of the numbers. But we, we, we got a much better handle on it than we did two months ago.
So I guess summary is what we're asking, uh, Mr. Director here for Public Works, that we'd like to see this particular report keep coming at our meetings. Uh, so that we get an idea as to how things are being expended, accounted for, and get a better view of whether we're running close to, uh, the red or whether we are actually having the kinds of money that was mentioned here at this table, that the money for the previous subject, the Tombstone Canyon project, is available.
We kind of jumped the gun a little bit, but I was gonna mention that in financial report. I actually did get, they mentioned it earlier, but I do have the, the end of July, um, financial, monthly financial report. And, um, I saw this and I thought, it looked very similar, so I thought that this was what it was. Um, next meeting, I'll, I'll, I'll start bringing the monthly reports.
Good. So, we already took care then of the item number two.
Yep.
Under new business. Everybody agreed?
Agreed.
Okay. Okay, so let's go on with the paving update then. We were, uh, used to getting that long sheet. But, uh, it's not here, but that's, it's quite all right, yeah, no, that's the.
So I, I can give you a report on what we're doing right now. So as we discussed a few meetings back, we started paving at, on the, at the terraces. Um, we are probably about three quarters of the way done. We were paving mill today. Um, they should finish up, uh, next week with the terraces. Our plan from, from there is there are a few roads, I mean, three roads in, in Warren still that are, are pretty bad. And I'm gonna look at trying to get those done since our equipment is already there. Um, we'll, we'll look at getting those done. I anticipate then, if we do, if we are able to do those, anticipate them being there maybe an extra month to, to get that done, because those are a little bit longer roads. I think one of the roads was, uh, Diatriomont and Briggs. And then, um, there is the road, I can't remember the name of the road, but it's behind the old Public Works building.
Douglas, Douglas Street.
Douglas Street, um, that one is, 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 is pretty much down to dirt. But we'll take a look at those and see what we can do. Um, after we're done with those, those few roads there and the terraces, we'll move on to getting into Old Bisbee. Um, we mentioned that one of the priorities was trying to get Naco Road done to the, in that area. It's getting, it's getting there and we, it's one of those things is we don't wanna let it get too bad. So we'll probably address that and a few other roads that are, that need to be done. So after we're done with Warren, we'll move on to Old Bisbee and try to get some roads there.
So that's looking like October, November.
Once we're done, we could, we should.
Well, to move to Old Bisbee.
Close to October, I think we, I think we can get there before October.
Steve, Ben, you're gonna have to ask questions, what you're gonna do in Old Bisbee. Because by then, by then, forgive me if I'm out of order here, but I think that by then, we're gonna have a pretty good idea of what it is that we can do with proposals that are coming in.
Absolutely.
For Tombstone Canyon.
Yep. Yep, we should be able to, so, yeah, well, well, that's, that's also a part of the plan is to, to work on Tombstone Canyon. That's, that's a project that we don't plan on doing in-house. We're gonna go to contractor with that.
One other thing we'll have to deal with is that October is the month that the, call it the social season in Bisbee comes into being. You've got one activity after another. And streets get real busy, you got stair climbing, other things.
We'll definitely keep that in mind when we, when we.
We have to work around those guys. And they are what makes this town, this town. And so we do have to accommodate those guys.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind.
We do have, uh, two projects coming up next year or anticipated next year on Maxfield and on, uh, uh, on Subway. Main replacements. Uh, so I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. If there's a way that, uh, those areas, uh, might not necessarily be mitigated, but may be delayed.
Sure.
In the process of Old Bisbee, so we can get some new mains in there before they're paved. Uh, just wanna make sure you were aware of those two.
You said, which, what were the roads?
Maxfield off of Claussen there and, uh, and, uh, Subway.
Okay.
And Maxfield, you're going from Claussen Avenue over there to the bend?
Yes.
Where they drop off?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's, um, what we're gonna try to do is, uh, it's gonna be a little difficult just because we need a couple of easements there. When Maxfield ends and just before it goes down towards Subway, it goes up back towards the Claussen house. You've got that set of steps that goes up. There's an inch and a quarter main that feeds all those meters there. And what we'd like to do is, uh, put some of those meters on Maxfield and some of those meters on Claussen because the facade there would enable us to be adjacent to the meter, give better, uh, better water, uh, pressure and quality to all those customers there. So we're hoping that we can, we can get that, that, that's paved.
There is.
Okay, so we'll, we'll definitely, we'll keep in contact, so.
Okay.
If we're getting those roads, those things start coming up, we'll know.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
There is Frank, there, uh, a, uh, WPA manufactured flood control system there across from Maxfield.
Oh, okay.
That, uh, we, we uncovered. And, uh, got it, it was all plugged up, choked up with vegetation and dirt and rocks and it, it got back into operation.
Okay.
So it's there and, uh, I just, like, you know, let you know.
Good.
It's there, yeah, it, uh, it was, uh, and we got it unplugged and it works just fine.
Good. They did a good job, this, from what we saw. We actually saw a lot of water flowing in those systems that, that were done way back by the, the, uh, WPA, uh, those folks. Good, they, they carry all the water that is flowing off of those runoffs there on, on, on Maxfield and then whatever drips over from Claussen into Maxfield and down to Subway. Oh, that's great. The, uh, going back to the update, uh, are you going to do the, bring up the, uh, valve covers and all those in-house, or are you gonna contract for that?
For when we pave or Tombstone Canyon?
No, the ones that you have already paved.
We do that in-house.
Okay. I bring, I bring that up so that people, if they get wind of it, they don't come out and be as... People always are, says, hey, look at the lousy job they did, they left all these holes.
No, we, we take care of that.
But we don't, we don't wanna hear that kind of stuff from them, because it's not true. They do a good, thorough job.
Yeah, and just as a kudos, uh, to, uh, to the streets department. I know Rahul and his team have been really, really diligent to help us, uh, locate the, uh, meter boxes and valve covers, uh, for our water mains when we didn't get there in time. So they were able to string them down and we were able to together get out there, dig those up, put new boxes, new, uh, A-frames and different things like that. So please pass on to those guys and we appreciate that.
Absolutely, I will, thank you, I appreciate, appreciate it.
Just one thing, on Ma, on Maxfield, similar things. That's one of the last cobblestone streets that we have. Um, so I don't know if putting in a new water line will, uh, cut up those cobblestones or if it's going to the side or, you know about that?
We're, that's, that's what I was, uh, mentioning about putting some of those meters out onto Claussen or relocating some of those. But where we plan or anticipate putting the main, uh, it's right where it's paved, not at the edge where the cobblestones run along the, uh, what do you call that? The, uh, the retaining wall there, that's adjacent to the old high school. Now, it'd be further to the, uh, the property lines, on the edge of the property line, still in right of way, but, but, uh, we would need some easement, uh, easements there.
Cool, yeah, yeah, all right.
Good point, though, thank you.
Just sometimes those issues get really heated, you know, I think. They're historic things, yeah.
Well, I'm not sure if, uh, if you're aware of that, but when we get ready to do a job like that, we'd like to let the city know. Our second stage is to provide drawings, um, construction drawings that identify where the mains are gonna go. So that's the opportunity for the city and, uh, the other utilities and even the residents to say, hey, you know what? I have an issue with that. So then we can take those back to our project engineers and say, look, this may be a problem. Let's find a way to mitigate it, uh, before construction begins, because it's way too late after that. Contractors like to hit you with change orders, well, we gotta do this and, you know.
And all of that.
Then it just gets expensive, but you know, but, uh, but yeah, that's.
That, uh, the WPA flood control, uh, construction we're talking about has a, is a actual combination, public, private owner, property owner, uh, kind of unit. It, uh, part of that, water comes across Maxfield, out of the channel, onto the private property through a little maintain. And this property owner is a good citizen and he maintains his channel. Unlike that guy down there on Cole and Sha, Saginaw or Chaddick Street that will not clean his ditch and causes all that flooding out there. You know, these people are good. But that's another example, you guys, of how failure to have a comprehensive plan that includes everybody, private property owners, the city, the utilities, they've all got to have share knowledge, so you know what you're doing. And you, then we can give them the best that we can, we can give, the good money for it. Because that's what's unique about Old Bisbee. You just can't come in there and do what you wanna do and leave. You gotta accommodate all these different entities.
On that, on that basis, uh, Frank, has the combined city utilities, uh, meetings continued or, um, they got, uh, overcome by events or what, you know?
Well, I, I've only been to two of them. One of them was in regards to the Mill Mountain Usury Association. Uh, and the other was the, uh, hazardous response that the Southwest Gas and other, uh, response teams. So those are the two that I've been to as far as the utilities go, um, that I was invited to. If we have others, uh, that take place, I'd be happy to attend.
Yeah. The reason I bring that up, because there seems to be at times an awful lot of markings on the streets. You know, and, uh, I speak for myself, I recognize blue as water and yellow as gas. And I don't know what the whites and the others are, but, uh, but it, it, uh, it'd be, we'd like to see that continue for the sake of having the, 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 the people involved. And, and maybe this way you can find out more about where your easements are and where you need to go get some more easements.
Right.
Okay. A B update. Any questions? Any more questions?
Um, yeah, you, uh, you mentioned, uh, the terraces and then a couple of other streets. Is Cochise Row one of them? Cause I noticed the speed bumps were.
Yes, Cochise, Cochise Row is one of the ones we're considering. Yeah, we, we, we took those. We took those, uh, speed bumps off because those are, that's not the appropriate application for those. You put a speed bump on a road that has no vertical curb, people just drive around them. And that was the case. I had a, a resident there call me and say that people were driving around the, the speed bump. Her front door was fairly close to the road and him coming close to her house. Went out there and you could definitely see people were going around the road. The speed bumps are, the speed humps are, are good for, um. The appropriate application. If you don't have vertical curb, they don't do anything except for make traffic go around them. Uh, traffic is just like anything else in the world. It's gonna take the path of least resistance. And so if a speed bump is resisting you, it's gonna, gonna go around it. So that, we did take them off and, and Cochise Row is one we're considering.
I've gotta ask about Campbell Avenue.
Is that one?
Between first and second. It's just dirt and gravel. Uh, you know, and people think it was repaved, um, when you repaved all those other Bakerville roads. But it was not included in that, um, group of paving streets and it's just horrible. And there's water backs up on there whenever it rains, cause it's got a drain under Bisbee Road.
Is that the road that you, did you send, you sent me one, didn't you? That's the one?
Right.
I have the pictures.
Campbell Avenue between first and second.
Yes, that is one.
Good, thank you. So I mean, everything else in Bakerville's been paved except that. Yeah, well, and there's an element of that that comes off of Wayland and it's starting to erode that had been paved ear- earlier. That's, you could look at that maybe between Wayland and first.
Okay.
Okay, financial, we went through that pretty well. Discussion on Bisbee parking plan. Ben, you wanna head this one?
I didn't, uh, come prepared, uh, so we might just have to table this.
No, don't table it. Discuss it the best you want.
Alright.
I'll tell you why. Cause the meetings that we have are a lot for that purpose. To discuss and then, and then talk things over and make it, it, it's a combination work session and reporting.
Alright, so, um, good, thank you. Um, that said, uh. It's come up in social media a lot about, um, parking in Old Bisbee. Uh, it comes up every now and then when people don't see anything new happen. And, uh, in particular, the tensions between residents and tourists and business owners. That can't park in front of their businesses when they're unloading things. Um, so, uh, since we're talking about Tombstone Canyon and repaving, obviously combining. Uh, looking for new opportunities to re-stripe. Uh, there is an area where that's getting developed with more businesses and that's around Screaming Banshee Pizza. There's a, Threes Noodle is moving from Kinda Naco. Up, up the street, so there will be more demand up there. And already it's pretty packed as far as, um. People park in that little triangular area in front of the courthouse and when that's in session, that's really filled up.
That's actually, just to touch on that, that's, that triangular piece is actually county property. Um, we've, from what I've been told, I haven't been involved in it a whole lot. That, uh, I've heard from the police department, if people park there in private property, that they'll actually ticket you, but I don't know how often. Um, but, cause it's private property.
Behind the Iron Man?
Mm-hmm.
Is private property?
Yes, sir.
This is not.
County, county property.
It's county, it's county. This is private property to the county. The county actually owns it.
How about like the ledge street? Is that county property also?
Which one?
That's the one in front of the, uh, old high, uh, the old school behind the, uh, Contessa, up on Mayo.
Oh, I'm gonna see.
Ledge, L-E-D.
Horseman School or something?
Ledge? Give me one second. I can look that up for you.
Only saying that because we're gonna kill it permanently because it's a section of main, right in front of the school there from the city.
I don't, I'm looking at the GIS map and, uh, Tombstone Avenue. And there is the triangular piece that comes down. But, um, part of it is where people park and part of it is just regular city. So they better be super careful who they're giving that ticket to.
Yeah, that, that's, I know that they've, they've men, they've mentioned it in passing that, that's happened.
But, you know, I think if the county owns it, uh. We should try and maybe work in agreement with parking, cause the county is us saying.
I would imagine that the county will ticket during regular business hours. If it's after the regular business hours, they won't. That's been the way it's, uh, it's last twenty years that I can remember with the old high school. With the county, uh, whatever business offices in there. That if, it's not free public parking during business hours. But after business hours, you can park in there and they won't ticket you. Just, that's the kinda way it seems like there.
Well, it's sorta, I think, I think just about every business in the world except for maybe where it's posted. Uh, the, uh, free parking after business hours is a, is a free.
Well, I couldn't, I couldn't do anything on that property at all. I can't, I can't stripe. I can't do anything. That would have to come. The only way that I can do anything is if I had an I, we had an IGA with them that says that I can do that. We can ask them to do a part, to pay, to stripe a parking lot, but that's not anything that, that I can do. I cou- I couldn't, I couldn't spend the city of Bisbee public money on essentially private property. And it's, and it's owned by the, the county. It's not owned.
Because of the county courthouse. It belongs kinda to the county courthouse.
It belongs to the county.
Okay.
Some, some of it does.
There's, not all of it, you're right, but for the majority of it in that, in that triangular piece. Um, I don't see it being a problem though, getting an IGA so that we could do something like that.
And then there's, there's some other spots next to the Saint Parish or Saint Patrick Church. Um, I think there's some dumpsters that are there against where the basketball court is. That is pretty wide there. That's definitely city property. Um, so where Quality Hill is meets Tombstone. Um, there's like a triangular piece that we could cordon off and fit a lot of cars in there. Um, and make it more of a four-way stop sign instead of this like weird triangular five-way thing.
Sure, we can look at that.
Take out a portion, put some curbs and then we could fit in like ten more cars maybe.
Sure, we can look at that.
Could I make a proposal here?
Without even touching that, which county parcel?
Yeah, well, I have a question, proposal question, sorry, is, uh. To have a good plan, I think that's what this is calling for. It's gonna take a little bit of time and seeing that parking is infrastructure, but it should. I feel that it should be done in association with planning and zoning and sustainability. We have two groups. Now, planning and zoning is a commission and not a committee. And therefore they can set policy. We can't. So if you then would be up to working with planning and zoning and sustainability. In a couple of months, maybe by the first of the year, you guys could have a pretty good plan.
We, we do have, uh, the U of A survey. Which two teams, the students went out and surveyed Old Bisbee specifically, looking for parking. And pedestrian opportunities that aren't being used. And that was, that Quality Hill Tombstone area was an area where they drew up and designed some things. According to, uh, the set of codes that they had. Um, so that, that's a really strong starting point to start the process in some targeted areas. Uh, that could be really cheap and not involve transfer property or other things that involve a lot of red tape.
Well, there, there has been, uh, uh, discussion of exactly that. It's, uh, property swap, city, some property. If by swapping, uh, property, the city could enhance parking or access to parking. By cutting a deal with your private property and all of that is. You really need somebody to, uh, shake it all up, put it in a basket and come up with a.
Let me ask, Larry, let's ask the question. Ben brought up the, uh, parking plan that was submitted by those, uh, students that came down here. And presumably they, they filed a finished report. Has anything been done on that report?
Not that I'm aware of. I think it's definitely been looked at and there have been some restructuring.
And who, who was that, uh, report given to? Do you have any idea?
Um.
I have a copy of it.
Andy, Andy, it was given to Andy and then Andy left soon after.
Yeah.
And then Dwayne was just too busy just trying to play catch-up.
Sure.
And, uh, so I'm, that's why I'm bringing it up is that, is to not have the same disappear altogether.
So the Public Works Director says that he has a copy of it. Cause, uh, the question, the question goes, the fact that the Public Works Director has a copy of it. Doesn't necessarily mean that he is, uh, been directed to implement the plan.
I haven't even reviewed the plan, so I couldn't tell you that, I couldn't tell you.
This is where I'm going with, with, with my question. We've got a plan right now. And if that plan include two plans, how?
Both two groups of students competing each other with each other with different ideas.
I, I would ask, and Ben, I don't know how much you've, you've gone into and reviewed it, but I wouldn't. I, I wouldn't be comfortable implementing a plan without reviewing it and knowing what is it, what it is. Um, has anybody else here reviewed that plan and, and been able to see what it is?
Well, I, I was at the U of A, I was teaching at the U of A at the time in the same building as these students. And so I went to all the presentations and helped critique, uh, Mark Appel, who works for the county now. Uh, who is officially too busy to work on this. He was working with the U of A at the time as well too, and he's the one that instigated the whole thing.
Okay.
So, um, he's reviewed it. He's also on planning and zoning.
Okay.
So. Our Bisbee planning and zoning?
Yeah.
He's working for the county now.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And so there's some good connections there that can still be worked. He isn't so much into volunteer work as much anymore, cause he's so busy and he doesn't work for the U of A anymore. But he's familiar with the planning and he's in planning and zoning. So there's some efficiency there. Um, but I'm willing to sit down with you and kinda go over my thoughts about the plan. Um, you know, taking into account how far tourists are willing to walk with a suitcase or whatever. Um, and being an Old Bisbee resident, so.
Alright, I appreciate that. I, I definitely take you upon that.
Whenever you wanna meet, we can sit down and, uh, talk and maybe if, uh, Mark Appels, uh, has time. He can sit down with us too, but he's definitely motivated. He's happy to see that it's, uh, I'm still bringing it up, so.
Good.
Does Mark know the Lumberworth State Extension Service?
No, he retired and now he's working, yeah, for the county now, so.
While we're talking about striping, the parking lot behind Bisbee Convention Center, why hasn't that ever had any stripe there?
I don't know. I couldn't.
No, because that would be a place if they got some striping or maybe just some short spaces for compact cars that were labeled on the wall. You know?
There has to be a defin- a definition of, uh, of where the property line is.
Yeah.
They've been over that one in court for a minute. Re-zoning the parking lots.
One, one of these days, God will give us our parking lot back.
I don't know why, when, when the last time it was or why it hasn't.
Hold it, hold it. The director has the word and the voice here.
I don't know why it, or when, the, when the last time it's been striped or why it hasn't been. Um, we haven't done any striping since I've been here, so I could tell you that's one reason why it hasn't been since I've been here. We've been, we had a plan, um, to do some striping, actually on Tombstone Canyon and Naco Highway. Um, but I asked, I asked for that to be postponed because our, we were possibly going to do Tombstone Canyon. So I didn't wanna waste the money to do that. So we haven't done striping because of that, but I can look into it.
Right, and, and even if you weren't gonna pave it, if you could just run a street sweeper up there.
Sure.
That would clean up a lot of the dust and gravel and dirt, you, you know, and I'm sure the, you know, nobody would care if you ran a street sweeper over. Um, office there behind Bisbee Convention Center.
We have, uh, we have discussed here, thanks to Ben, that there are two parking plans that were. Were both of them submitted?
Yeah, I only have a copy of one of the teams.
Uh-huh. Well, you're gonna get, you're gonna get with the director though and see if he's got the whole complete plan.
I can look through my folders again and see.
Yeah.
I have the other one.
Uh-huh. So there's, there's quite a bit of, of work left here. I'm gonna throw this thought in there that we learned about this on, uh. As a thought that was offered when we, uh, on parking, uh, last Tuesday. Satellite parking, which ties in with your idea of, uh, uh. Exchange private property for other properties. That subject was broached, but there was not enough discussion on it. To really make an intelligent comment here other than that's the way it, it came to us. As a, and I'm offering here is, is a, something to look into. Satellite parking, and you mentioned that, uh, don't know if the business people would wanna walk a little bit. Uh, but in the comment of satellite parking, the thought of maybe there could be a, a shuttle. From that satellite parking for the business folks to shuttle to their business. And open up some other parking in front of their businesses for the people that come into town.
The mayor did say that it was the Lowell parking lot that was his first choice, that that was the Freeport-Mack Moran property that the city was currently leasing. And that the bus could take people from that Lowell parking lot to, you know, uh, their, uh, Old Bisbee or Tombstone Canyon wherever they're. And he seemed to think that the business owners would want to maybe take advantage of that parking. To open up those spaces that they would occupy normally when they came to work.
The question there, uh, Larry, comes up as to who is willing to spearhead the, uh. Approach to the business people. I'm not, I'm not gonna take it. I'm not gonna recommend that this committee take it.
I, I know everybody that's got a business on that street.
Which street?
Uh, Erie Street.
No, that's not what he, what he suggested.
That, that Lowell parking lot is.
Erie Street.
Yes, yes, he suggested that that be the satellite parking.
That runs.
But involve the people that are, have, have businesses up in Old, in Old Canyon.
Oh, okay.
To come down here and set, and, uh, shuttle from there.
Would give them free bus fare.
Yeah, he, it, uh, that's, that's.
But that, we bring in this in so that, uh, Ben can incorporate that someplace into, into some other discussion that goes on for, for parking.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of views from what I've seen on social media and talking to people about that. A lot of people are supportive of that. I personally think it's. I don't know at the end of the day if, if people are gonna wanna get on the bus and go through all the extra hassle.
You give them a bicycle at the top of the hill. I don't know how you're gonna get off.
Okay, so, uh, but I think, you know, up, uh. Up Brewery Gulch, there's a lot of little tiny lots that are private that have chain link in front of them. That are very aggressively don't park here signs that maybe they can be bought out. that maybe they can be bought out, maybe it's worth it, maybe it's cheaper than the shuttle. Um, and then there's also a couple of lots going up, uh, Tombstone Canyon as well that are similar.
Ben, you, you brought up the, uh, the subject of maybe bought out. And I'm going to offer this. In your quest to write out a plan with whatever assistance you, you have available, and whomever is gonna come to your aid in, uh, in pursuing a parking plan, would also, do you think that the business people in Old Town and Tombstone Canyon would be amenable to form a consortium of some kind and buy the parking lot that is up for sale?
Uh, the one here, uh.
Being right by, uh, right there in front of Brewery Gold's.
Possibly, I don't know.
Maybe it's, uh, I, I don't know, I'll, I'll speak for myself here in a half a minute. Seems to me that the people that make the loudest noise don't want to put out the money. If they would get together as a consortium, there's plenty of parking there, but it's never been considered as part of the Bisbee parking plan because that is private property. And I won't say any more on that because.
Yeah, I just add with that, I agree with you. We've been through this a lot downtown with the owners. And when we redid the parking plan, what was it, when, um, it kind of was like 2012 or something, it was a long time ago. Basically, all of the requirements for providing parking with your business were waves for Old Bisbee residents, where people out here have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to maintain the parking. Suggestions were, hey, why don't these guys chip in a little bit of money to maintain parking around town? It was a big, you know what they would say, so really amenable to them putting a penny into the pot? No. Not parking in front of their own business? No, they'd rather park in front of their own business and complain.
Anyway, those are, those are.
We've run into this before.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
I'm just repeating with you there.
Do you want to continue talking about this or is this enough subject for tonight on the Bisbee parking plan?
I think the first step is just to, uh.
Your idea is great.
Is to go over the U of A, uh, plan and look for the opportunities that you don't have to change any parcels or anything first.
Are you then volunteering to head this up this up? Ah, boy, we gotta volunteer, you guys.
Well, if you'd like, I mean, I like the idea that you can add some reapproach.
I'm going to add this to close the subject on, on parking that. If the question comes up, and it has already come up, whether or not the committee in the city has anything to do with, uh, using, uh, street funds for the parking, I would say if it's a legitimate parking property of the city, then we could, uh, find our way to define that as part of the streets and infrastructure if it needs, uh, paving. Other than that, there's no, I would not recommend from the committee, and here's the opportunity, agree or disagree, uh, I would not recommend from the committee that they spend any money in, uh, in, in that, uh, venue and take it into consideration that there might be some satellite parking areas. Uh, if they need paving, then we would have to consider a pro or con recommendation as to how much money to invest in paving of those areas.
Yeah, well, keep in mind satellite parking also, the shuttle has, you know, labor expenses and maintenance as well too, so.
Well, I would like. I would like to say that I think striping is a really good idea for some of these. You know, I was talking to Tito about this, so somebody counted the parking spaces that were in Bisbee, you know, and up and down Tombstone Canyon and Brewery Gold's, and there's only like a hundred and seventy-five. And so through striping, if you could just find another seventeen parking spaces, then that would be ten percent improvement over what we have. And people do a horrible job, you know, behind the, behind the Bisbee Convention Center. And if they, and if you could just find a way, I mean, even if you only striped the Bisbee-owned property and left the private-owned property unstriped, you know, sometimes they could see what the plan was, you know, they could, you know. Yeah, or Conner Street, those all need to be reviewed. And so I think, I think, I think striping is an appropriate topic for the Streets and Infrastructure Committee to discuss. And, you know, even if you could just find another seventeen parking spaces, that would be a ten, a significant improvement in the parking downtown.
So I have, I have a question that you may or may not know the answer to is if, uh, so the area behind the convention center is owned by the same owner as the convention center, it's a different parcel. However, it appears that they need to provide an easement for fire trucks or whatever because of public parks back there unmitigated. Now, if they're providing an easement to the city, is the city able to maintain that, sweep it, and strip it? If, and also market for fire trucks or whatever.
It depends on what the easement is, if it's an access easement, um, possibly. If it's just, if it's, it really depends on what the easement is, there's, if it's a utility easement, no, we're not supposed to do anything other than provide utilities there, so I would have to look to see what, if, what, what that was. But drainage easement, you can, you can do anything but let water go.
Yeah, because currently they have the area roped off halfway, right? So you can't go from the big lot to the little one, but it, it's definitely, I'm sure there was a fight at some point where that rope is, that you can't go past. There's a good reason that rope is there.
And that's, and that's one of the reasons, it was kind of, I was thinking, I wanted to check, but that, that could be another reason why it hasn't been striped is because we don't own it.
Well, yeah, but what I'm saying is if the easement is for vehicular access, then maybe we could.
We probably know we could, we could, I'd have to see, are you, are you, do you know for sure that there is an actual recorded easement?
No, I don't, I can just see that the property owner.
Owns all the.
The G A S M F open, owns all thing, and where they barricade people out is way like halfway through.
Sure.
And knowing fire code and those sorts of things, like you need to get a fire truck up to the back of the building, no questions asked sort of thing, which is vehicular in a way, but.
We'd have to see, we'll get checked.
Yeah.
Thank you all. Let's go on. You wanna go over this subject now and go into member comments? Staff comments, sir, do you have anything?
Yes, I'd like to just do a quick, uh, update on, on some other projects that we hadn't touched on. Um, Tin Town, we have, that, that project should be finishing up here at K and G. We did some paving and some drainage upgrades there. Um, as soon as, and K and G is doing that project, once they're done with that, then they're gonna move over to the Sims, the Sims road wall that was approved. Um, they should start on that one after that. Um, we, I met with our engineer, um, of the W L B group on the, there's a wall in the drainage channel there that needs to be addressed. Um, it's between Moon Canyon and Star Avenue. Um, I met with them recently, we're going to be meeting again, I believe, next week. Um, actually with K and G so that we can discuss, um, some, the plans for that. Um, there is another, another wall that's up on OK Street that I was made aware of that is not doing too well. And, uh, I'm gonna most likely try to move forward as, um, as quickly as possible on this one. Um, it's, it's not in good shape and, and needs to be addressed.
Now, is that that city owned?
Believe so, yes, that one is the one that, there's one that comes up, the staircase comes up, and then there's a, um, wa, there's a access to it, it's supposed, it's a walking access, but there is no, there is no sidewalk on it, it's just dirt right now, but the wall's fa, failed and, um, there's a sinkhole now there, and so, I, I think it needs to be addressed as quickly as possible. And that's, that's all I have for my comments.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, you need any help from the committee on those?
Not right now, no, um.
Eyes and ears?
Oh, there's actually, what is, what is one other thing, I think I kind of mentioned it, but I work, we are, we, that's our software that we got for our pavement maintenance and, and our asset management, the work order system. Um, we, uh, we hit the, the ground running on Monday, we, we are, we're using it for our work order system. They're still working on putting together the, the pavement management portion of that. Um, that is unlimited users, we can, once we get going, we, they will provide, they will provide training on how to do road assessments. And I've heard more than once that a few people here may be willing to help out and go do road assessments. And so we would be, it would, we would give you, um, access to our sys, our pavement management system. It's just, we'll go walk them and we'll do assessments, we'll input those things. And once we get those payment condition indexes inputted, we can start using it full-blown.
Pretty good, you know, that work order system is, uh, Mr. Stone over here had a problem with the work order system. He says it would not exist.
You're writing, don't you write it down on scrap paper?
Oh, yeah, yes, they were, yes, they, they, we kind of intentionally stopped using, um, C Click Fix, which was the program before, because the, it's expired and we weren't sure when they were going to just cut us off, and so we didn't want to have any records. So as of Monday, we aren't doing anything paper anymore. Um, we, we got all of our field technicians, they all have iPhones now, and they all are doing work orders assigned to the, on their, on their iPhone. And once they, they input their labor hours, they input the equipment they use, then we're gonna have a better, um, better way to track our costs.
Excellent. Nice. I skipped over, uh, member comments. Do we have any?
Well, I do, uh.
You want, you want to start it, or should I start with Steve?
Uh, let's start down at the end there.
No, I'm good, I don't have any. Okay, I don't have anything to say. Okay, Larry, you're on.
I will, uh, this has been a productive meeting. And the one thing that I am excited about is to see a lot of these old issues that previous administrators have just failed to act on and ignored. And parking issue is one of those issues. And so this committee, even though the parking isn't really our bailiwick, it is. We've got competing, uh, committees and commissions that are, that all, that should be taken, but will lead the way if we have to. And, uh, we're, we're just getting things done and so many, uh, going forward. I'm really enthusiastic about this meeting tonight, it's been a very good meeting.
Start over here with you, Frank.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Doug, Michael?
Uh, no, I just appreciate the discussion on the parking, it was very interesting.
Ben?
Um, yeah, whenever, uh, if you want to meet, um, I'll email you, maybe set up something.
Okay, great.
Go over the parking.
Thank you.
Plans and maybe loop somebody in from, uh, planning and zoning. Uh, and, uh, yeah. Oh, and, uh, that weird parking situation on OK Street, has been resolved yet?
The, you're talking about Miss Patience?
Uh, yeah, her and then her neighbor with the illegal parking.
We, I haven't seen anything on the structure. Um, there is a work order in, now that we've got a new work order system for, for that. We discussed there was supposed to be some restriping or repainting of the, that area to give her some space there to park, so that's, that's it.
That it, Ben?
That's it.
Thank you. Uh, my commentary that I have been, uh, visiting, I have been visiting the terraces. And it's very impressive what four members of the paving, the streets paving crew can do. Because I inquired how many people were working out there from one of the members and, uh, they do amazing work, they say a little bit at a time, but we get it done and believe me, they do get it done. They, they've done good work all along. Uh, perhaps at times they might need a little bit of, uh, direction, but they do honest and truly need a lot of compliments. Because we have talked about the issue amongst ourselves that a crew without compliments gets demoralized. And this crew is an outstanding crew and we would not like to see them demoralized at all. So, my compliments to the crew, and yesterday I think they wound up working with three. It was amazing that they got as much done with just three people, a little bit at a time. Hooray for them. Call for adjournment?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Oh, and, uh, turn the mics off.
Yes, please.